Terms and conditions.
Thank you, Rebecca. Mr. Butler has been here since early and needs to...
That's totally fine.
No, you can sit there, stay there. Where did he go? Oh, Mr. Butler, can you come forward? We're going to allow him, he doesn't have written testimony, he wanted to get his stuff on the record and he's been waiting patiently since 10 o'clock. You may proceed, start with your name for the record and...
Jay Butler. I own a property and a business at the corner of 21st and Hunting Park, which also extends to the corner of 21st and Erie. And before I say another thing, I would like to thank Councilwoman Bass's office for helping me get rid of the donation bin.
You can proceed with your testimony.
Okay. One day I went to work and there was this blue don- I didn't even know what the name of it was, but there was this blue box on a far corner, not on my property, but on the other side of the fence on the sidewalk. So I felt I would, you know, okay, it's a nice thing to do. Couple of weeks go by and now the bin is full, couple of weeks go by, clothes are falling all over the place, so I called 311 to help and nothing happened. Then a mattress and a television set showed up. Called again and that they could take care of. So two or three days later, I guess the city department came by and took the mattress and the TV set and left the clothes, which I thought was funny. And at the same time, I must say that the sanitation department of Philadelphia stops at this corner every Tuesday. I've asked them to do something, it's not their job. I call again the 311 complaining, nothing happened. Then some smart person told me to call my city councilperson. So as fate would have it, I did call, a young lady named Elliot helped me out and it was the same day that the Inquirer was doing a piece on the donation bin problem, which I didn't know was a problem. Any case, at that time, she asked me if you don't mind coming to, at the donation bin, so they could take a picture of me. I didn't know why they needed a picture of me. So they only took a picture of the bin. And at this time, of course, the clothes was spread out. Now, of course, we had some alcoholic beverages also in the bin. And the piece came out on Monday and I think a couple of days later, the sanitation department came by and with shovels took all the clothes and threw it into the dumpster and into the senate, into the truck. And then a couple of days, and I called the city councilperson and thanked them. And a couple of days later, the donation box was gone. Very happy, called, thank you very much. And just a little caveat to this whole story, as coming down today, I passed the corner, I don't live at 21st and Hunting Park, but there is a nice neighborhood, we live right near the police department, right near the 39th district. And actually, I did go to the 39th district police to ask them if there's anything I could do because I was getting nowhere for probably a month. And they told me, well, if I want, I can move it myself. So anyway, I didn't move it myself. But lastly, on the way down today, I now have a mattress at the corner of 21st and Erie. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your patience. Any questions from our witness? Thank you so much for coming down and putting your story on the record. We greatly appreciate it. Proof positive that government works. Most of the times. Want to acknowledge Councilman O to my right. And with that, Rebecca?
Good morning, Council, Council, good morning Chairwoman Sanchez, members of the Committee on Licenses and Inspections and sponsor Councilwoman Bass. My name is Rebecca Swanson. I am the Director of Policy and Legislative Affairs for the Department of Licenses and Inspections. Today, I'm here to provide testimony on Bill Number 150079, which if enacted, will add to Title IX of the Philadelphia Code, a section regulating donation bins. The Department would first like to thank the sponsor as well as the offices of Councilman Jones, Councilman Heenan, and Councilman Nielsen for their collaborative work on the amendments to this bill. The Department supports this bill with the proposed amendments and its intention to improve the quality of life for citizens by making donation bins subject to certain maintenance requirements. Specifically, the bill holds the owners of the certain, of these certain properties upon which the bins may be placed, as well as the owners and operators of the bins themselves, accountable for the proper design, placement, and maintenance of the bins. It is incumbent upon these owners to take full responsibility for all associated obligations under Title IX and the Property Maintenance Code. The Department is prepared to enforce the provisions of this bill as amended, should it become law. The Department will, on a complaint basis, inspect the property upon which a bin is located and if a code violation is found, will cite the property owner and the bin owner, if known accordingly. Thank you for the opportunity to provide the Department's testimony on Bill Number 150079. I will be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. Any questions? Can you quickly say, tell us what this bill will allow Ellen and I to do? When you talked about responsibilities for the property owner as well as the bin owner?
Sure. What it will allow Ellen and I to do is go out with, on a complaint basis, so if we receive a complaint through 311 about these bins being placed on private property, we will go out, we will inspect the bin, and if a code violation exists, which would be a violation of the Property Maintenance Code, typically for exterior trash or graffiti, we would cite both the owner of the property and the owner of the bin. In some cases, it's very difficult to ascertain who the owner of the bin is, but we will cite everyone we can find. And with that code violation, as it would be either a ticket handed right on the spot or it would be a notice of violation that's sent out to the owner.
Is this a CVN or?
Yeah, it could be a CVN or it could be a notice of violation.
Councilman O? What happens if you can't find the owner? Like if you...
Well, we'd be able to find the property owner because we would have a record of who the property owner is.
Right. So for example, the property owner says, I don't know where that came from.
Typically, the bins do have some sort of name or contact information on them, or at least the name of the owner. So we would do some research to try to find who the bin owner is.
Okay. My question is, is there a, is there some point where if you can't get in touch with the owner, there isn't contact information, the property owner doesn't, that the bin can be removed?
Well, we would, it would be incumbent upon the property owner to then clean up whatever the violation is. So if there are clothing or items around the bin, if there's graffiti on the bin, because it's on the property owner's property, it is incumbent upon them to maintain everything on their property, which would include the donation bin.
Okay. If it's on public property, abandoned property, something like that, is there a procedure whereby instead of letters going out, the bin gets thrown away, removed?
By public property, do you mean the right-of-way?
Yes, somebody.
The right-of-way would be the streets department because Ellen and I only goes up to the property line. So if someone calls in and says that, that there is one on the right, a bin on the right-of-way, the bill specifically prohibits anything from being on the right-of-way. So sidewalk, streets, anything like that, that complaint would be directed to the streets department and then they would handle the citation and eventual removal if that's appropriate. Ellen and I would stick to just what's within the property line itself.
The citation and the eventual removal, is it clear who removes that?
If, again, if it's on the right-of-way, that is the responsibility of the streets department. If it's on the private property, it would be incumbent upon the property owner to maintain because they're not, they're not prohibited on private property. They just need to be maintained while on private property. The prohibition is on the right, on the right-of-way only.
I guess, like, for example, let's say it's on private property, but nobody knows where that private property owner is, as turns out to be the case in more than one occasion. And then instead of just kind of citing the property owner, is there like, if they don't respond in a certain period of time, the, like, in other words, it's kind of like the, you live in a neighborhood and there's a property and nobody is responsible for it, it seems, and there's some tenants, or maybe there aren't tenants, and this bin is there and it's been, you know, there for a number of months and you're, you know, there's citations going out, but does somebody remove that after a period of time, like it could be removed?
There is a provision in the bill that would allow for the removal of the bin if it poses a public safety hazard. And again, this is limited to private property where they are not, where they are allowed. If there is a public safety threat as determined by the Department of Licenses and Inspections, there is a provision that it could be removed.
So you would determine that?
I'm sorry?
So the license, Ellen and I would determine that it's a public safety hazard and it could be then removed?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Heenan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to thank you for your testimony and support of the bill. I want to thank the co-sponsors of this piece of legislation, Majority Leader Jones and Vice Chair of Ellen and I Committee here, Councilwoman Cindy Bass. I think, you know, there has been an increasing amount of proliferation of these bins just plopping up and showing up everywhere, destroying the quality of life of our neighborhoods. And, you know, Ellen and I, you know, is extremely important, the first line of defense, you know, in handling these, these types of issues. You know, I know my office specifically has been receiving a tremendous amount of new calls as well as ongoing for the last, for the past year and a half of, of, of these, these donation bins just showing up without our authority. And, you know, you know, we keep getting a runaround on who authorized, who didn't authorize. And I think that this, this legislation collaboratively has, has been well thought out and protects our, our public rights a ways, especially when it comes to commercial corridors and the quality of life. Have you been receiving more calls regarding these, these types of bins just popping up in the neighborhoods?
I don't know if we've been receiving more calls, but we do receive calls typically and we will go out and if it's on private property, we will investigate. And we do treat that as a Property Maintenance Code violation because trash and graffiti are both, they are both enumerated in the Property Maintenance Code. As far as complaints for the right-of-way, I don't know, have a figure on numbers because those would be directed to the streets department.
I mean, we had the gentleman who testified a little bit ago here prior to you. And, you know, it's, it's the broken window theory and that's what, you know, exactly what the Property Maintenance Code, you know, helps to prevent. You know, you, you have a irresponsible bin that is placed there illegally without knowledge or permission of whomever. And, you know, it gets filled, it's not regularly checked, and next thing you know, it becomes short dumping. And that's, and that's, that's what's happening, at least in my district and I think with some of my colleagues. But I also want to note for the record that there are good, responsible, you know, bin, donation bin owners that are out there, that are, that are doing the right thing for the causes that they, that they all believe in and that we, and we share and echo. So for those that are good actors, you know, this is not to regulate them in, in a sense that it's, it's going to hurt, you know, what their goals and objectives are. All right, this is for those who are irresponsible or illegally and taking advantage of the citizens of Philadelphia and the city as a whole. So I just wanted to clarify that and show that, that there is a difference, but enough is enough, you know, with the irresponsible donation bins.
And by putting some onus on the property owner, we do believe that that will help, that property owners distinguish between the good actors and the bad actors, and they will be much more discerning as to if someone does approach them to ask permission, they will, because they have some risk in being cited themselves, that they would be much more limited in who they allow to put the bin on their property.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from our witness? Seeing none, thank you very much, Ms. Swanson.
Thank you.
I have Beth McConnell and James Harvey. Then after that, I have Terry Kaplan and Rick Sarari.
Good morning, Chairwoman Sanchez, members of council, members of committee. My name is Beth McConnell, Policy Director with the Philadelphia Association of Community Development Corporations, PACDC. We want to thank Councilwoman Bass for her leadership in introducing Bill Number 150079, as well as Councilmembers Jones and Heenan, and Councilman Nielsen as well, who worked collaboratively to craft an amended bill that addressed these donation bins for used goods. PACDC's members, which include groups that work to revitalize and improve the conditions of our residential neighborhoods, as well as our neighborhood commercial corridors, have repeatedly contacted us to express frustration about these used goods donation bins popping up in their neighborhoods. The bins have been placed in the public right-of-way and on vacant lots, have been the source of illegal dumping, including household garbage, are consistently tagged with graffiti, as well as plastered sometimes with illegal event posters. And when they are poorly placed and poorly maintained, they are a blighting influence and a drag on neighborhood reinvestment. PACDC is fully supportive of the individual donors, nonprofits, and companies who put unwanted goods back into productive use rather than in a landfill. But we believe the bin owners, as well as the owners of the property on which they are placed, have a responsibility to nearby residents and businesses to prevent the bins from becoming an eyesore. So we support Bill Number 150079 as amended, which would prohibit the placement of the bins in the public right-of-way, would also restrict the bins to private commercial property, require the express written permission of the property owner allowing the placement of the bins, require that the area around the bins be free of debris or other donated items, and require that the bins be kept free of graffiti. And importantly, would hold both the property owner, as well as the collection bin owner, responsible for any violations. And I've shared, attached to my testimony, a couple of photos of some bins that we've seen. This, the blue one is on, in Alny. I think it's North Sixth and West, I can't remember the exact address, but it's in Alny. The other one, this one is from Esperanza Service Territory, near the commercial corridor that Esperanza manages on North Fifth. And just examples, and they actually, the Esperanza actually tries to keep this clean. They actually clean it up themselves when they can, which is a huge task. And this other is actually in my neighborhood. You'll see it's tagged with graffiti and has been there for months. We have two suggested additions to the legislation of, you know, first, if it's legally permissible, we would advocate for language that would prohibit placing the bins on vacant property that is either in the public or the private inventory. That's because if there's not regular, ongoing activity at the site by the property owner or the tenants, it could take days or weeks or longer for the responsible party to even become aware of the fact that there are maintenance issues, let alone act on them. And we already have huge challenges keeping our vacant properties free of litter and garbage and we think that this can exacerbate the problem. Second, we recommend that it be required that the property owner post in a very conspicuous manner what the city's fines are for illegal dumping at the bin location. It's certainly going to take an awful lot more than just notification to ensure compliance and catch violators, but at least posting the fines puts the potential dumpers on record that if caught, they're going to face steep penalties. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Questions? You can proceed, Mr. Harvey.
Good morning. My name is James Harvey. I'm a committee person in 17th Ward. I want to thank Cindy Bass and Ed Nelson for helping me get two removed off St. Anne Avenue by Medary. It's been going, an ongoing issue in our neighborhood for the last four or five years, you know, about these bins. The bins is a problem because they're becoming dump sites. And like the lady was saying before, how she would try to do it through Ellen and I, me, that's not going to work. Of course, for one thing, I called 311 on numerous occasions and tried to explain to them where the bin was in my area, and they told me it was on private property. I told them it's on city property. They said, well, we had to cite them. Well, how are you going to cite the recreation department? Saying, I really think what's going to happen, it's going to get lost in the mix because the turnaround, the turnaround, writing up the paperwork to get these removed is going to get lost. Because they were saying that they're going to try to notify the owners of these properties, which is vacant, but you can't find the owners anyway. The lot's still dirty, the lot still has trash, you have a bin that's clothing on the lot, so how, how are you going to do one to get the other? And our problem is that the owners that came into Philadelphia and just dumped these throughout. On numerous times, we called the owners, they're very nasty, irresponsible people in the areas. And that's, that's all, that's the severe demeanor going right then and there. But we appreciate the bill, what everybody's doing, but like everything else, it has to be retooled a little bit better than how it's going to be. And that's what the 311 operates, which has no idea how to do this. Because my neighbors, they was calling and we was calling. Luckily, they called Cindy Bass and Councilman L.J. and Nelson and we jumped on it. But how about the person that don't know? And when you tell me you couldn't do anything because it's on private property, which is a city playground, that's wrong. So then when I turn the paperwork into Ellen and I for this to get cited, there's a 30-day, a 30-day, a 30-day, a 30-day, we overswam, we're going to get. Obviously, it'll be a year turnaround for even getting one removed. Because where's the revenue going to come to get a tow truck too? But I just can't understand, I really can't understand. I've been dealing, I've been a committee person in both areas for the last 30 years and I can't understand how these companies are allowed to come into the city of Philadelphia, drop their things without really nothing, nothing more has been said to pass a bill. I really, I can't understand it. You know, it's some, to me, and I've always been blunt, there's something just ain't right. Because if I can tell you, you don't do something, you keep doing it, it's not right. But I hope the bill works, I'm for the bill and everything, but the calls in the 311, the calls in, somebody has to really be accountable for the paperwork because they getting ready to get swamped because they, they everywhere. You know, I have one other thing I stop. I really think you should just go back to had them in where they used to be in shopping centers. Years ago, they used to have one in the shopping center, M Bar Office, serving. That's the only way you see them. But to tell, you know, you talking about right-of-way on a vacant lot and the lot's dirty with trash and you have a bin and I'm calling you about the lot a year ago, now I'm going to catch up for the year for the bin, that's not the answer. I'm thinking.
Thank you, both of you. Rebecca, can you come back up and answer the question about can it be prohibited in city vacant lots and stuff? I don't understand if there's a legal issue. Thank you so much.
About vacant lots and the placement on?
Or public, or city-owned property?
Well, it would have to be, the provision in, is it has to be zoned, commercial or industrial. So that obviously limits, you're not going to be placed on a residential lot in between two occupied homes or anything like that. And in addition, again, it'd be the incumbent upon the bin owner to ask permission of the property owner. I don't believe the city would ever provide that permission on a city-owned vacant lot.
So for interpretation purposes, anybody who has a bin in a vacant lot that a city owned should not be there?
That is correct. I don't, and again, then it would become, we would, if we are called to that, we would cite the bin owner and then we would let public property know that the bin is on that property and then the discussion would ensue as to how it gets removed from that property.
So that implies, as the gentleman was talking about, rec centers and other places because they would require authorization?
They would, yes. Anything that the owner is public property or whatever city department, they would have to provide permission.
Okay. Just one clarification for the record. You have a question, Councilwoman Bass?
Yes, yeah. Well, you know, really more of a statement for Mr. Harvey back there, who I know very well, is one of my committee people in the 17th Ward and has been doing a great job in the community for a very long time. And, you know, I just really wanted to say that, you know, I certainly understand the frustration. I think that we all feel the frustration and that's the purpose of the bill because, you know, you ride by these bins, they look awful. There's, you know, they're a magnet for other trash and dumping and debris. And, you know, I agree, you know, it feels as if, you know, a lot of our neighborhoods have become dumping grounds for, you know, anything people don't want in their own neighborhood. They don't live near it, but it seems to be okay to dump it, you know, whether it's in the 17th Ward or the 12th or 13th Ward. You know, it's okay to dump it in West Oak Lane or Germantown or North Philadelphia. And so I just wanted to say that and say, you know, I certainly understand. You know, we're going to work closely on enforcement on this, so it should not take a year. Actually, it should take a whole lot less than that. And if you are having difficulties, we want to know about it so that we can move it along. And we encourage you to call our office, you know, you can contact 311 also, but call our office as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. And then our last panel is Terry Kaplan and Rick Sarai. I'm trying to get that right. I should be better at pronouncing anything that ends in a vowel.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Rick Sarai. I'm with Planet Eight along with Terry Kaplan.
You may proceed with your testimony.
First, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak regarding Bill 150079. First, Planet Eight has operated bins in the city of Philadelphia for over eight years now. We have over 300 bins within the city, which collect annually over 700,000 pounds. Our bins, when placed prior, excuse me, prior to placement, we get written consent from either the property owner, the tenant, or the leasing of that property. Very systematic approach that we utilize to make sure we gain authorization to place the bins on property. Now, there are a few concerns regarding Bill 150079, which we would like the council to consider. First one is Section 9, 4102B concerning the permitted use of donation bins. It states that the property owner or the property owner's authorized agent has provided written permission to the owner or operator of the donation bin for the placement of the donation bin on the property. I would like to see if that could also be amended to include the tenant or the leasing to have permission. There's a lot of absentee owners of properties or businesses where we're not able to gain access. In Section 9, 41-
Excuse me, I just need clarity. What are you asking for? I don't know if you...
We're looking if we can have that also-
You're asking us, you're saying that because you can't locate a owner, you, you want us to remove that provision?
To also include where the tenant or the leasing has-
Tenant or leasing?
Correct.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. Just making sure.
Section 9, 4103, Number 4, where it states, "No donation bill shall be placed within 20 feet of any building nor within 20 feet of the public right-of-way." Not having the ability to place a bin within 20 feet of a building severely hampers our efforts in collecting clothes and also minimizes-
I'm sorry, can you speak into the microphone? We're having a little bit of trouble hearing you.
This minimizes our opportunity to place bins where they're actually visible or strategic place where citizens can donate.
The 20 feet from a, from a building?
Correct.
Go ahead.
Okay. Section 919, 41041. "The name, address, and telephone number of the owner or the operator of the donation bin and the property owner or property owner's authorized agent shall be printed in clear and legible letters not less than three inches high or in the front of the donation bin." All of our bins we've had in the city for numerous years now, all of ours are two inches and we wanted to see if there's any way that could be grandfathered in with existing bins. It's very cost prohibitive. We, we manufacture all of our labels throughout the country from various vendors, but we would have to go through a large change in order to make three inches instead of the two inches that we utilize right now throughout the country.
You're saying two inches?
The diameter of the-
Oh, the lettering.
We place our name on all four sides. We locate, state clothes and shoes donations on there, but they're not three inches. Our name of our organization is two inches.
Anything else?
Yes. Also, as in Sections 9, 4105, Points 1 and 2, we feel that the bin operator, the owner, should be held liable for any violations of this chapter, not solely the property owner. We feel that bin operators, with the proliferation of bins throughout the city, that bin operators should be held liable to a higher degree in accountability than they are now. And in addition... we wanted to see if any licensing and bonding could be done with bin operators with the Also, you know, specific instructions on how to seek permits and the cost of doing so for bins, if we had to tag our bins with labels. And whether the bin operator or the owners, they should disclose whether they are nonprofit or for-profit on their bins as well. And the last one is, the operators, the owners of these bins should submit tonnage reports to the city on a quarterly or annual basis to indicate what they're collecting and how much they're collecting.
You're asking for that the operators submit a report to the city?
Correct.
On their collections?
Correct.
Do we want to take the, the other testimony and then ask questions? Or, or you need clarifying questions, because I don't, I'm a little confused, I'm trying to follow this.
I, I, I kind of follow, I'll wait till the other testimony.
All right, are you finished?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
If Mr. Kaplan could, if we'll be here.
Well, I just wanted to state a few things.
Can you say your name for the record, please?
My name is Terry Kaplan.
And you got to speak into the microphone.
And I appreciate the opportunity to speak today to the council. I just want to say that I've heard some of the testimony earlier today, and a lot of that is geared towards the, some of these other entities that are here. I, I, I know that Councilman Heenan pointed out there were good actors and bad actors here, and, and I feel we've operated on a, a higher level than some others. And I, I, I just wanted to point that out, that that should be understood. And I think even some of the witnesses you've had here can testify that we, we've operated on a different level than they have. And I also would like to address the green initiative that the city has, where I know the city has a goal of eliminating 70% of what's going to the, you know,
Garbage.
Dump sites. And I, I'd like to, you know, say that having clothing bins in the city is, is helping that goal, not hindering it. And that's, that's it.
Councilman O.
Oh, thank you very much. So thank you for your testimony, and, and I think we all understand there's good operators and bad operators. But I don't exactly understand the nature of the business, be it nonprofit or, or profit. I, I think I understand the nonprofit side, I think I understand the business side. So let me just go through this with you. So your company alone, and I know there's other companies, but your company alone has about 300 bins and collects about 700,000 pounds of clothing per year.
Correct.
And are you a nonprofit organization or a for-profit?
Nonprofit, we're 501(c)(3).
And where is your headquarters?
In Elk Ridge, Maryland.
Okay. And how many bins do you have nationwide?
Over 20,000.
Okay, 20,000. And when you collect the clothing, where does this clothing go?
The clothing is collected, it's brought back to distribution centers within 14 states that we operate in.
Do you operate a distribution center in Pennsylvania?
Uh, yes, in Hatboro, Pennsylvania.
In where?
Hatboro.
Hatboro, okay.
Yes, sir.
And so, all these bins, the clothes go to Hatboro, and what happens there?
We bail the product, and then we ship the product, whether it be domestic or international.
Okay, so clothes also, also go internationally?
Correct.
And where do they go internationally? How many countries do they go to?
Uh, over 15 different countries around the world.
Okay, 15 different countries. And the cost of shipping, the cost of delivery, the cost of transportation, the cost, the man-hours involved in all of this process, how is that paid for?
Uh, all the internal costs of the operation are paid for by Planet Aid. It's paid through the sale of those clothings.
I'm sorry, it can't-
It's paid through, when we sell the clothing, to fund our programs around the world. That's how we cover all of our expenses, all of our operating expenses.
Okay. So when you sell the clothing, how do you sell it? Do you sell it per, per pound, or do you sell it per garment, or how do you sell it?
Per pound.
Per pound?
Yes.
Do you know the salary of the highest-paid officer in your corporation?
Yes.
And how much is that?
150,000.
You already put two-inch lettering on all four sides of the bin, and does that include the contact information?
Correct.
Do you identify yourself as a nonprofit?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you. So you have 20,000 bins nationwide, and you said you have about 300 in Philadelphia. Can you tell me where they are in Philadelphia, what neighborhoods?
Uh, they're spread out throughout the city. I don't know the exact locations. I can give you those.
Can you give us an idea of, you know, maybe where the majority of your bins are? Are they, you know, in the northeast, or southwest, or?
Sure, I'll let Terry can explain that to you better.
Okay.
They're spread out pretty equally. They're not very, they're not, we're not really represented very strongly in center-city area.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, because it, it just doesn't make sense. It's too congested, and it's, it, it would cause too many problems for the public, and even for our collections.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but we're probably strongest throughout North Philadelphia and West Philadelphia.
Okay. Because my, my concern is that, you know, a, a lot of these bins, as we said earlier, you know, in my own opinion, are problematic. They become eyesores, they get tagged up, and, you know, all those sorts of things. And so, you know, when we put them in areas that already have considerable blight issues, that your, your bins become issues now. And so, you know, I, I don't know, do you have any bins in, you know, some of the more affluent neighborhoods in Philadelphia?
Yes.
Chestnut Hill, West Mountain area?
Yes, no, we, 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 we do, except for center-city itself, where it's really tight and the streets are too small, we're pretty much represented in all the other neighborhoods.
Okay, I'd really like to see a list of, of where the bins are and, and what neighborhoods. Because I think that speaks to, you know, your, your thoughts about those neighborhoods, and, and also your thoughts about other neighborhoods that are not, where, where there are no bins. So I'd, I'd really like to see a list.
We try and keep our bins clean in all the neighborhoods. We don't-
Okay.
-try and say, well, this is a nice neighborhood, we're going to keep it cleaner here. We actually try and do a very strong effort in keeping our bins clean and neat. The only, we have a little problem with graffiti, we can't control that. But we do have a shop, and we do have one person that will, we bring bins back when it's reported to us, and somebody tells us about there's graffiti on it, we will repaint them and reconfigure them. We do a very good job with keeping our, all the trash from our bins, because we have, if people call us, within 24 hours, that trash is removed. And we, I, I think there's some separation from us and other vendors in that.
Okay.
We, we really make a great effort in keeping our bins clean. If somebody's going to be nice enough to host our bin, we don't want them to have those kind of problems.
Okay. And do you currently have any bins on residential properties? Do you currently have any bins on?
No.
Okay, vacant lots?
No, we don't do that.
No? Okay, all right, good.
We use a, we use an agreement that we sign, that the authorized agent of that property signs off on before we even approve it. Comes back to our facilities, and the operations manager approves it before placement.
Okay. And you said you remove trash once you get a complaint within 24 hours? Okay, and graffiti as well?
Yes.
You currently, that's your, and about, in, in terms of suburban Philadelphia, in the different counties, what kind of count on bins do you have in the surrounding counties?
We have probably additional 1,000 bins spread out throughout the metropolitan area.
Okay.
So they're in a wide range of markets that we have them in.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Councilman Heenan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you guys for, for coming in. I have a few questions. One, how does this piece of legislation affect your business? I mean, if you're one of the good actors that are out there, how would this be an obstacle or a hindrance for you to continue to do what you, what you have been doing?
Outside of some of the points that I discussed, we're in full support of it, because we think there needs to be, you know, an ordinance in place.
So at, at this current time, at this current time, you do know where every bin is being placed? So if the city had asked Planet Aid for an inventory list, you would be able to provide them?
Not a problem. It can be done immediately.
Okay. And you have a call line, hotline, that is indicated on the bins for any kind of issues or complaints? And how often, and it, and you do, if you do, how often is it being, being monitored or, you know, people working the phones?
The number rolls into a landline at our address on 2940 Turnpike Drive in Hatboro, Pennsylvania. It's monitored between 8:00 and 6:00 p.m. daily. After that, messages are checked the next morning. Depending on seasonality of the business, sometimes we're run five days, mostly six days, on an off day. Manager is responsible for checking that on a, probably on a quarterly hour basis, checking messages on the weekends.
And do you have a regular, I guess, you have somebody going out as a supervisor or the eyes on, on the street to take a look at, physically taking a look at the bins that you could provide the inventory to the city for on, on a regular basis? Or is it as somebody calls and says, hey, your bins are overflowed?
And we have a very systematic approach. We know how many pounds each one of our bins yield, and based on that, we develop a frequency of how often we should go to that bin. If we do get a call, we'll immediately respond. We have a field manager that responds. Terry Kaplan is our community relationship manager, and he responds for any other issues outside of the collection close. Collections are responsible by the field manager, transportation manager, and an operations manager at our facility.
Okay, and as, as far as the graffiti, you know, we, you know, through the property maintenance code, we do have provisions, you know, for, you know, for dumpsters and for properties, and, you know, we've actually, you know, tweaked it over, over the last year or so, where, you know, the days of, of, of remedy was from 10 down to 5, because, you know, what happens is, you know, upon, and that's always a discretion, upon notification or, or notice of, of, of the graffiti, you know, which, you know, could be a month, who, who knows, you know, but the reality could be a few months. You know, so, you know, it's just a suggestion, you know, I'm, I'm sure you operate in, in a, in a good actor, as, as, as your business goes, you know, a, you know, some graffiti removal, you know, as you're going along and speaking, it probably would, would go a long way with you, you know, moving forward. I mean, we, we address graffiti on a regular basis. We address bandit signs on, on a regular basis, and holding business owners and property owners responsible for, for the clutter and, and litter of our neighborhoods, as well as, as well as the benches, you know, that, that just plot, you know, just appeared everywhere, you know, throughout the city. And I'm, I'm afraid that if we don't regulate behavior now, not as, as, as an obstacle for somebody to do business, but to regulate it for the quality of life, it, it'll just continue to get disorganized. And, and I think that's, I think that's what, that's what's happening here. So I, I, I'm hoping that your, your relationship with the, with the city, Department of LNI, you know, I suggest that on a regular basis, you should, you should check in with them, submit inventory, and see how we can, you know, be good partners with the city of Philadelphia.
Yes, we have a full-time, we've employed a full-time bin maintenance person that refurbishes all the bins, so if we get a call that there's graffiti, or there's a problem with the bin, we pull that, we replace it. If there's a need to replace the bin due to the graffiti, then we'll bring it back, we'll put a new bin out that's been refurbished. It's never an issue that we wouldn't respond.
And I'd, I'd be remiss, I'd be foolish not to mention, you know, we'd appreciate if, if you wanted to move your, your Pennsylvania headquarters in the city of Philadelphia, that'd be great. You know, we do have a good office of, of manufacturing in the industry that would love to see you here. Thank you.
Councilwoman Bass?
Thank you. And one other quick question, except a couple of quick questions. So can you talk about the actual clothes cleaning process? Who does that? What, what goes into the clothes, you know? Can you talk about that, you know?
Sure.
In a little bit of detail?
There's no cleaning of the clothes. We minimize how many times we actually touch the product, do, just purely from an operational cost perspective. We pick up the bins, the drivers pick up the clothing, excuse me, from the bins, we bring them back, we offload it, we weigh it by driver, we scan everything in. At that time, we start bailing the process. So we place it in like a cardboard bale that you see in a grocery store. We bail the product. We don't sort it, we don't clean it, we don't do anything with it. We just bail the product, and then we ship it out on an ongoing basis. So we don't clean it, we don't sort it, good from bad, or anything like that. We just bail the product, we ship it out to the customers.
Okay, that's interesting. So when you just sort the clothes and send them out, do you have any concern? I mean, I'm sure you've had to have issues with, you know, whether it's bedbugs, or other infestations, or like, is that not an issue when you send the clothes out? And I know this isn't directly related, but I'm just, I'm just curious.
What, what happens is when the driver goes to the donation bin, they sort the trash, number one. They set, pick up all the trash, and they put it in a separate area in the truck. So it's kept separate from all the clothing. All the other clothing, if it's wet, if there's mildew, if they feel something's wrong with that, they put it in the trash cart. And then we, when it comes back, we discard it after we check it, because we go through, unfortunately, we do get a lot of trash, and we pick up all of our trash. Once it comes back, we recycle, we try to recycle almost all of it. We separate all of our paper, our books, our cardboard, electronics, we donate toys. We try to minimize the amount of tonnage that goes in the waste stream. Number one, it's, it's cost-effective for us if we minimize that, and plus, we're helping the environment as a whole.
Okay. So when, so when these clothes come in and they don't, they're not cleaned or sanitized in any sort of way, and then they go to this production facility in Horsham, and then they're handled and bundled and sent abroad often? And that's, that's what your production is?
Correct, yeah, straight, when it's collected from the donation bin, it's taken straight to Hatboro, and there it's processed, meaning it's bailed, and then it's, it's shipped right out of that facility domestically, or internationally, wherever the customer's based out of.
Who does your sorting?
Whoever the customer, the end users who buys the product.
Okay, well, at, at your facility in, in Hatboro?
We don't sort anything, so if you, if you go to a donation bin and you drop a bag in there, we'll pick that bag up, we'll take it, put it in our truck, take it back to our facility, take that same bag and just throw it in a baler and make a bail out of it. We won't touch that product, we won't open that bag up.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
We minimize how many times we'll actually touch that product. We're not a clothes collector that collects and sorts everything out of it, good from bad. We send whatever we get to the end user, and the customer gets that product.
Okay.
They then, they then actually would go through and sort everything through there. The only thing that we take out are some of our shoes that come out. That's the only thing we take out of them, nothing else.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilman Greenly, and then Councilman O.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Just quickly, sir, I think in your, when you were going over your suggested changes, I think the first one you said was that the bin operator could also make an agreement with the, the tenant or the leasie? Is that?
Yes.
Is that your suggestion? I, I think the problem with that, maybe Ms. Swanson can address it, is ultimately the prop- the property owner has to be responsible for the property. And I think if you don't make it with the property owner, the property owner could then say, well, I didn't know it was there. And I think you said that oftentimes owners are hard to find? Well, I got to think the tenant knows where to find the owner. They have to pay him rent, right? So, I don't see that, at least on that one, as a problem. So, what's your thought on that?
We've encountered it numerous times in all the different cities that we operate in. It's very difficult to find the owners.
Yeah, but numerous. Wouldn't you just ask the tenant?
Like, if we deal mostly with business owners. So, we would ask. We would just ask the business owner, you know, of that facility to sign off on it. And if they signed off on it, when it came back to the operations manager, then he would approve it and allow the placement of the bin.
But, I mean, in the end, the property owner would still be responsible, right?
Correct. Or that the owner of that business would be responsible. They would be held liable through the property owner.
But the LNI could only cite the property owner, correct? They couldn't cite the leasing, right?
Committed.
Right?
Could amend it. If the tenant signs on behalf of the property owner, they'd be responsible.
Could they be? Leading?
Yes, yes.
Could Ms. Swanson just address that, please? I don't know if you heard what we were saying.
The difference between an owner and a tenant for enforcement purposes and my interest for collection purposes?
For property maintenance code violations, we would cite the property owner. So, if there are tenants in the property that are committing, you know, their building is covered in graffiti or whatever, we would still cite the property owner because they are responsible for the conduct of their tenants.
So, my point is that the owner would then, for the purposes of this bill and what the gentleman was asking, you really have to have the permission of the property owner rather than the tenant, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. And because of the way that the provisions of this particular bill, we would also be able to cite the bin owner. But the bin
The bin, I understand that.
Yeah. The bin owner would have to have the permission of the property owner, not just a tenant or a business that is using that property.
So, could I?
Go ahead.
Yeah. So, I'll just make a point that, you know, even for many of the very large buildings in places like Manhattan and here in Philadelphia, there's a property management company, and it depends on the lease. And the lease can say that the tenant is responsible for everything and indemnifies the property owner, and the property owner is responsible for nothing. So, any type of fines or whatever that you give to the property owner then goes to the tenant anyway. And so, I don't think it's a bad idea. They're suggesting ultimately that in addition to the bin operator, the property owner, that the tenant or the lessy, who may have a 20-year lease, could have a 30-year lease, could have a 15-year lease, if they'd be held responsible as well. And ultimately, you know, it's just an additional party. What it does for them is that it gives them the opportunity, if there's a tenant who's dealing with a property management company that you cannot get to the owner, because a lot of times, for example, even here in Philadelphia, the property management companies in New York, and you never find the owner. You don't get through to them. What happens is they can get authorization from the tenant, who is fully responsible for that property. And at any rate, it might help us as a city if we would do that in other circumstances because that may be a hole where we are not effectively dealing with the property owner.
That's not something that we can do because we don't, we don't get involved in leases. We don't get involved in private contracts between the owner and the tenant. That's not something that's really our business. We focus on the property itself and what the conditions are at that property. The property owner, under the property maintenance code, is responsible to keep that property code compliant. So, we don't want to get involved in these personal disputes as to who has what lease, who's responsible under the lease. It's not something for LNI to work out. That can be civil court or however the owner and the tenant want to work that out.
That makes as much sense, too. All right. Thank you.
I think one of our issues has been, and Councilman Heenan, and I know Councilwoman Tass has been working with this, even when we require folks to give us a list of their property maintenance and their telephone numbers and so forth for the normal code stuff for residential properties, it's very hard to enforce. So, it puts, as you said, LNI at a disadvantage.
If I can add, I'm sorry. If there is, if there are licenses and proper documentation, we will have the information about the property manager as well, that who is acting on behalf of the property owner. Obviously, they need to have somebody in-state if they are an out-of-state owner. So, that information, if they, you know, if they have the proper licenses, we will be able to contact the property manager as well. We wouldn't be citing the property manager, but we would use them to get to the owner.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that one of the problems that has been, why we're having this issue, is that there have been a proliferation of bins which have, don't have identification, and they appear to be for-profit companies. And they, and I think it's misleading. Many times, people like to donate their clothing to the homeless and to people who need clothing, and if they know it's going overseas to some poor countries, I think they'd be happy about that. But, you know, when these bins are operated in a for-profit manner and are not being, the cost of bins is maintaining them is not incorporated. And it goes true for nonprofits, if they maintain them as well. But I think, you know, I appreciate your suggestions, and I think quite frankly, if we remove some of these bins of these irresponsible companies and we identify that they're for-profit or nonprofit, it would actually probably help you in your nonprofit work. I do appreciate, you know, the good that comes of it, and I think people support that in general. So, if you have these suggestions, if you would speak to the sponsor and the chairwoman further to work out some of these details. Okay? Thank you.
Correct. I will do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Any other questions from our witnesses? Seeing none. The committee, anyone else here to testify on this bill? Seeing none. The Committee on Licenses and Inspection will close its hearing and enter its meeting. The Chair is going to recognize Councilman Greenly for the amendment on Bill 150079.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move the adoption of the amendments to Bill number 150079.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none. Before we move to final passage for the bill, the bill sponsor is willing to look at some of these things. And if any additional amendments, it will be made on the floor. Do you want a suspension of rules?
No.
Okay. So, the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly for a motion on the amended bill for 150079.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that Bill number 150079, as amended, be reported out of the committee with favorable recommendation that the rules of council be suspended to allow for first reading our next session of council.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppositions? Seeing none. Bill number 150079, as amendment, as amended, will be moved out of this committee with a favorable recommendation and further rules of council be suspended to allow first reading at our next public session. This concludes the meeting of the Committee on License and Inspection. Thank you all.